Good evening. Welcome to Athens City Council Meeting, Monday, April 1st. We're going to begin this evening with a second public hearing regarding our Community Housing Improvement Program, the CHIP program. And if you have not signed the paper at the end of the table, all members of the public who are here observing or participating in this hearing need to sign in. And who's?
Basically Greg Andrews will be emceeing this. Again, this is our second public hearing for the CHIP grant. We put together some package of what we want to do in terms of house repairs, home repairs, and rehabilitation. I'll let you get into details of it and also probably explain how people plug into it when the time comes.
Okay. Well, again, this is the CHIP second public hearing. It's an opportunity for public input, comments. Let me go through some information here and then we can kind of open it up a little bit. The national state objectives and goals, the national objectives primarily to benefit low to moderate income families, aid to prevention or elimination of slum and blight, to meet an urgent need of the community which poses a serious and immediate threat to health or welfare if other resources are not available to meet that need. Goals of the program, provide funding for a flexible, community-wide approach to the improvement of affordable housing for low and moderate income persons and develop local administrative capacity. Funding available is just under $21 million this year in federal CDBG and home dollars and possibly some OHTF Housing Trust Fund dollars. Grant ceiling this year is $400,000, down from 500,000 previous years for quite some time. The program, the state requires a pretty extensive planning process. We've gone through that process, had a very, very productive meeting, well-attended, and a lot of input. There is a variety of activities that are available through the program, and it was the duty of that committee to recommend activities that will meet the needs that were identified. Those activities are private indoor rehab, three units to be completed at $123,000. Rental rehabilitation, plan it to two units at $82,000. Home repair category has a cap of $125,000, and we'll go for that, $125,000 completing 13 units. New construction activity, which allows participation with Habitat for Humanity, $22,000 available that the city can provide for a Habitat build, and that activity also will meet a match requirement of $50,000 that the application requires. And administration at $48,000, for a total of $400,000. The application deadline is this Friday. If funded, the funding will be announced in September, and after that, we will open up an application process, so through public notice, notices in the newspaper, just a variety of resources that will be utilized to solicit applications.
And there's income guidelines for this?
Income guidelines, they're based on county median. So I believe for one person in the family, I think we're about $30,000. For a family of four, you're in the mid $40,000 range, so they're pretty reasonable guidelines. The private indoor rehab, I've mentioned this before, private indoor rehab activity does require the city to take a mortgage against the property, but those guidelines are changing, and actually later this month, there'll be clarification from the state of just how the city may want to approach that. There may not even be a requirement of a mortgage, although it may be something that you'd want to consider, but we'll bring that back when that's all clarified. The home repair activity is a grant, as I mentioned the last time I was here, and the slots, we did have, I think, three slots available then, and those are filling up, so that's great. I think that's about it. Any other?
No, and the intention, of course, is to achieve the goals and the standards or the strategies we put in place. So that's why we, there are lots of activities that could be included, but they don't fit our area and our market. The meeting with the Athens Housing Coalition Group was pretty well-attended, as Greg stated there. A lot of conversation went back and forth of what we would want to see and what's possible to do. We're a little bit different than the county in one sense, because the county has different parameters in terms of the housing stock as well as needs for it. I mean, there are, you know, there are activities that fit better out in Trimble or out in the county rural area, but that's not our purview.
Do those areas have access to CHIP program?
Yes, they do.
Yep, we administer for Athens County, Hocken County, Perry County, City of Nelsonville, and actually we're writing a grant for the first time for the City of Logan this year as well. So all those areas are covered.
And the bottom line, it brings dollars in and helps the housing stock. That's the whole point of this.
Absolutely.
So I guess the next question is, if there's any questions from the public, we'd be where, so he can put on the spot.
It went by me fairly quickly. How many families are going to be affected positively by this?
Well, there will be, for the private rehab, which is up to $46,000 produced, there'll be three families that receive those services. For the home repair activity, which is smaller in scope, averaging around $8,000 as a cap of $12,000 on that, and there'll be, we will say there's 13, typically we'll do a couple more. So 13 to 15 of those units. And then the rental rehab, there'll be a couple of families with that, and then the new construction, which will be a Habitat build.
And where will the $50,000 matching come from?
The Habitat build, when that home is financed and sold to a family, that amount can be used as match for the program.
That's why it's good to work with Habitat, because they can come up with that portion. It also does new construction. The difficulty within the city, of course, is finding lots that they can actually order that. We did that on, what is it, Alexander, there, those two lots there, but we don't have anything in the queue right now, but I think you said-
Habitat has a lot on Curtis, as I understand it, so that's great, the lots they acquired, so that means that.
So that will cover that. And this will be the second time they've built in town?
Yeah, this will be the second build for Habitat, so it's-
And then the $48,000 for administrative costs, where is that?
Most to Hocken, Athens, Perry County Community Action.
Yeah. And it's a two-year program, it's pretty extensive, so we have onboard a housing coordinator, and we have two rehab specialists, and then a couple other clerks that support that, so it's pretty administrative habit.
So it sounds to me like a great deal for helping folks out. What does it involve from the city's standpoint in terms of commitment and time?
Not really much. It's, well, we've signed off on it, so we have to look at it. We look at some of the administration stuff, to draw it down, so there is some administration time on it, but this is one reason why we've outsourced it, just so, because rather than have to hire a bunch of people to do this, and again, we have lots of activities going on in the city, much less to be experts in this field. And again, I think they've been doing a good job of it.
So $400,000 to help a lot of folks, that sounds like a great deal.
Yeah.
It's a great program.
Two questions. You mentioned a mortgage that the city may need to take out?
Yes, and it's always been a requirement of the program to secure the funds for the larger projects, the forty-some thousand dollar projects, that those funds, the state has required that the city take a mortgage, a declining forgivable mortgage. So the way it's written right now, there is some recovery there, the state required up to, I think up to 15% recapture. So the way it works is the 85%, the way it is now, it's going to change, but the way it is now is 85% is forgiven over a period of years, and depending on the funding source, either five years or 10 years, 15% is a permanent mortgage that would come back to the city at some point whenever the house is sold or no longer occupied by the original applicant.
Okay.
So there is an opportunity, and there's a lot more that plays into that, timeframes, closeout on the applications, so there's some other, again, some other things that play into it, but ultimately, the city could see a recapture of maybe $4,000 or $5,000 on a project, and that money, of course, will be, would have to be reinvested based on the guidelines from the program funded originally.
By structure, this is almost like a revolving loan fund, except for the forgiveness part. We have in the past, sitting here in the audience, I don't think you've ever done it on council in the past four or five years, but you've actually have somebody who's want to sell a house early, in that five-year, 10-year range, and they would have to pay back that piece, but it has, the idea is you don't want somebody, you know, you invest in a house, they flip it, and that's it. So that's why that forgivable mortgage is there. In theory, if you didn't put that in there, you could actually recapture that money and become part of a revolving loan fund, a housing revolving loan fund, if I understand correctly. You can always correct me if I'm wrong, don't hesitate to do that. But the idea there is that, you know, you don't want somebody to just say, "Yeah, I just put $40,000 into a house, I'm ready to go, I'm going to sell it and move out."
Right.
So that's one of the stipulations that's in there.
Okay. Sounds like a good precautionary.
That's on rentals as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Rentals, we don't get a lot of bites on, though. You said you're only going to be doing two.
We're doing two, and we're probably going to work with Metropolitan Housing on those. It's available to nonprofits.
Yeah, they actually are the best fit. They can actually rehab a lot of their housing stock and still make it work.
I'm just curious, I understand that, you know, with this whole program, the main emphasis is on the house itself, the structure of the house, but does it go beyond that? In other words, can, if someone has a deteriorating walkway or staircase or, you know, leading up to the house porch or driveway, are those, do those fit in as well?
It's pretty much all-inclusive. The work is governed by the set of standards that the state has developed called the Residential Rehabilitation Standards, and it is all-encompassing, and it's through the roof, through the foundation, walks, anything that pertains to that property, so yeah, it's, and because of that, there's also a walkway policy. If a home can't be brought into compliance with the rehab standards, then no service can be provided. That's kind of unfortunate, but that's where maybe the home repair activity could come into play and give somebody a hand, if that's the case.
And that's the difficulty, of course, is that some things can't be brought up easily to a standard that's required. I think we had one on First Street many years ago, and actually fell into condemnation category when they looked at it. They went to apply, and all of a sudden it's like, there's nothing you can do, in fact, you shouldn't be living in it.
Sure.
So that became a problem there.
Right.
Actually, this is, I've gone to several lectures about the vacant housing stocks out there, where the recommendations that the, I think it's Lima, the housing directors there are saying, you know, maybe we shouldn't be trying to bring it up to standard, the idea is to keep the people in there, so it doesn't become a vacant house. But it's tricky at that point. You know, when do you say you've put enough in to make it livable, and if you have standards, the standards are supposed to be used, but again, it's counterintuitive to the people trying to keep somebody in the house regardless of what happens. So again, this is not our money to play with, so we have to do it there by standards.
Yeah, I think my head, too, is going in the direction of, again, this may be unique beyond the scope of CHIP, but I keep thinking about accessibility issues. If someone in a home, over time, finds that they need to have ramp access into their house, does that qualify as well, or are they too unique a feature, or is it all, again, is it all inclusive?
For the home repair activity, that would certainly qualify, yeah. And if it was, if that was the case with the rehab, that would be, that could be incorporated as well, but if somebody just needed a ramp or something like that, the home repair activity would be a better fit.
Good, it's good to hear.
Okay.
Just one other quick question.
Yeah.
Are there any components that we're doing this year that are new, that we didn't do, say, in our previous round?
Well, this application, I believe, is exactly like the previous one.
Previous one, yeah.
Previous one that we can, but again, the Housing Advisory Committee that comes together is, it was a great group this year and a lot of discussions, so I feel, you know, I really feel strongly that what they came up with was to meet the need that they found, so.
Actually, the last cycle was probably more new because of the Habitat House as well as the rental rehab. Those are two new activities we put into the mix, mostly because with the help of Metropolitan Housing as well as Habitat for Humanity, so we did branch out a little bit the last cycle. The meeting, at the meeting, the city representation was Paul and myself, Paulo, John Paskey, so we had, you know, both the enforcement side, the planning side, and the operations for us. So we had a good representation there, but it covered the entire county as well, so there was a broad consensus on what needs to be done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks.
The council meeting will be continued at 7:30, so we've got about a 15-minute break. Communications, we do have a quorum of members present with five members, but there are some voting restrictions. To accept an ordinance, we need four positive votes, and if we have a, to accept an ordinance with an emergency clause, we need all five members to vote in the affirmative to accept that. This is, this is not a tie-breaking situation, so I'll be quiet. So we have established a quorum. We do have disposition of a set of minutes from the regular sessions of city council on February 18th and March the 4th. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes?
So move.
Second?
All those in favor of accepting the minutes for February 18th and March 4th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Those minutes are accepted. I just have a quick one. Coming up on Saturday, April 13th, is the city, what we used to call Streets Tour, but it's now called the Infrastructure Tour, because we look at things other than streets. It begins at 8:30 a.m. here at the city building out front. We will take buses, a bus or buses if necessary. Council members, of course, are going to go. We will have some elected officials going with us. Public is invited, but you do need to call the clerk of council and let us know, just so we can make sure that we have enough seats for everybody. Again, it's Saturday, April 13th, beginning at 8:30 a.m. Members of the public, please contact our clerk to let everybody know. Reports and communications from other elected officials. Mayor Wile?
Well, a couple of things. Of course, April's going to be the busy month here because it's winding down in terms of, or I guess not winding down for semester stuff. A couple of things. One, I think, you talked about the 13th, I think the 14th is beautification day, so just be aware of that, and get involved if you wish for beautifying the city. Also, I want to mention, there was a press going out about the Grosvenor Fairview Stair Rehabilitation will start this week. We're going to be doing some repairs of that. If you remember, we put some money forward on that. We're replacing the pressure-free stuff with some white oak and do a piecemeal as it's needed, so we can save some money on that. I'm also aware that there's the Nuff Blanc event that's occurring this weekend, I guess April 6th to the 7th. I'm not sure really what it is, a new performing arts festival, so watch out for that on Court Street. Let's see, I also know that there's Take Back the Night, the 4th of this month, too. I see you're nodding, so you're aware of that. And I think I've covered everything like that. Mom's Weekend, too, of course, so that will be covering most of the things that are going on. So it's going to be busy for the next four weeks at least, and that's all I have, unless I missed something. Anything, Service Agent Director?
I think I've covered it.
Okay.
The stairs will be closed during the construction, so that's why we wanted to let everybody know.
So you don't get stranded on one end or the other.
Is there a projected length of time?
Not really, because they're doing it as needed, I believe, so they'll be looking at it, fixing it, hopefully not too long.
I can get you an answer on that, then, I'll see.
And maybe the government channel could put it on our-
Okay. We get a lot of traffic on it.
Okay, I guess we'll move on to other business. Ordinances for third reading. Ordinance 2413, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to submit an application and enter into an agreement for grant funds through the Transportation Alternatives Program for the Richland South Improvements Project and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 2413.
Second.
And this is part of a larger project for us on what's called Richland South, and it is south of the Roundabout, starting at Dairy Lane, and continues on Richland Avenue to Canterbury, and we'll be doing rehabilitation of the road and also curb, sidewalk. We hope to incorporate bike path of sorts, and it will maintain good access for the businesses on Richland Avenue. This is part of a $4.07 million project, and we have $1 million in funding so far from grants, and what we'll be doing is authorizing the city then to apply for funds from the Transportation Alternatives Program, and that's due May 1, the application.
Mayor Wile?
Again, we're trying to pull together the money to put this together. We've got a ways to go, so we're hoping. And I think the next one is actually for the engineering part here, I believe, so keep your fingers crossed, maybe we'll get some good money.
And, but the plans for this project are for completion in-
It'd be 2014 if you're lucky.
2014, yeah. So this year is planning and putting the money together.
And just as an aside for Richland Avenue, because there have been a few questions, there is, there are plans for repairs of that road. I know we've had some questions from citizens, and we'll be covering that information on our street tour, but that will be when Hot Mix is available later on this year. So between now and 2014, there will be some repairs of those potholes.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 2413 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2513, an ordinance authorizing design engineering of the Richland South Improvements Project Number 244. Member Nysley again.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 2513.
Second.
And this is for the design component of this particular project, and the amount that we would be appropriating would be $420,000 for the design portion of it.
All those in favor of ordinance 2513 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is accepted. Ordinance 2613, an ordinance authorizing design engineering of the Columbus Road Bike Path Spur Project Number 270, introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 2613. And this particular Bike Path Spur, we are hoping will kind of coordinate our transportation efforts on the north side of the road. It's one of our major corridors. We have a bike path that runs down to the other commercial businesses, but at this, along East State Street, but at this point, we don't have a link that links the Columbus Road businesses, some residents that live there, and assisted living, and also individual residents, and we're hopeful that even the Bike Path Spur might encourage folks who don't have transportation, who might need that to be able to get from Chancie or some of the other outlying areas around Athens and to get into town. So this will, this particular ordinance will be for $170,000 for authorizing the design engineering of this Bike Path Spur. We will be working with the EPA since it does involve crossing the water, and want to be very careful that we're mindful of any environmental concerns and work with them during the course of the project.
Questions, comments? All those in favor of adopting ordinance 2613 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 2713, an ordinance to ensure local match funds for the Mobility Manager Grant and declaring an emergency. Member Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 2713.
Second.
And this particular Mobility Manager Grant originates with federal funds, and then they are brought through the Ohio Department of Transportation, and what it literally, it is what it literally says in the title. It helps the community manage transportation issues. So we have a coordinator that we've been able to hire with the grant funds. The grant is actually managed through Hocking Athens Perry Community Action Program, what's otherwise known as HAPCAP, and so this particular person works through that agency. The city's commitment to this grant is $5,000 in cost share, so that's what this particular ordinance does, is it obligates the $5,000 towards our portion of the match on the grant.
Mayor Wile?
And I believe there are other entities that are matching $5,000 as well. I forget, I think it's the county and then Department of Family Justice.
Children's Services, I believe, is the organization this year that's helping with it.
And the idea is to coordinate all the different transportation aspects within the county and see if we can make a working system, a unified system.
All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 2713 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 2813, an ordinance amending the 2013 appropriation ordinance introduced by Councilmember Nysley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 2813.
Second.
Thank you. And this particular ordinance has three components to it, expenses for three different projects or expenses of sorts for the city. One is for the Lands and Building Fund, General Fund, $32,000, which will be used to repair the four brick chimneys on this particular building that we're in tonight, the city hall proper. $45,000 for the Community Center Fund for reimbursement of our Go Bus ticket expenses, and then the last $17,000 is for use of restricted funds, the law enforcement trust funds. These are not general funds, these are not general operating funds, but restricted, and that is for law enforcement software. And I do believe that Councilmember Reisner and some others asked some questions and asked for the chief pile to provide us with some additional information and answer the questions for us.
For a moment about this particular use.
Certainly, and thank you, Mr. President and Council, for the opportunity to speak. What I've requested is the appropriation for the law enforcement trust fund money, the proprietary fund that's generated through seizures, asset seizures from criminal cases to purchase a hardware-software package. It's three separate software and hardware components that would provide the ability for our department to search cell phones under proper circumstances for evidence of crime. Three separate packages, as recommended to us by the Columbus Police Department, whom we currently get the service done through, and I think there was a misunderstanding on my part that we had been working with Bureau of Criminal Investigations, it's actually Columbus Police Department who we've been coordinating those efforts through. And the reason we would like the software is we definitely see a need for, a pressing need for it actually on a regular basis, possibly up to two to three times a week, dependent on the caseload of the CIU Division, Criminal Investigations Unit, and it would expedite the search of these phones, which currently takes us anywhere from four to eight weeks, six weeks on average, to arrange tests with Columbus Police Department or occasionally Washington County Sheriff's Office, although it's my understanding that their system is limited in capability. So we got a recommendation from the forensic examiner from Columbus Police Department, who was nice enough to put together a package for us of the software that they use and recommended for us, and the reason it's three different systems is, as you can imagine, with all the different styles and models of cell phones, so they recommended we get these three individual packages, which when combined should allow us about 95% capability on those cell phones. So that's what the request for. Now, I understand there are concerns. Obviously, when you talk about Fourth Amendment issues, there are- Obviously, when you talk about Fourth Amendment issues, there are concerns and there should be, and I have no problem at all discussing those concerns with Council.
We had some questions from Councilmembers.
Thank you, Chief White, for coming. My main concern was the security of the, of the software. I've been through the system over there. There's a lot of computers, a lot of laptops, you know, cruisers have computers and so on. And what concerned me was the fact that you could theoretically, possibly, the software could wind up on a computer that it wasn't intended to, and then who knows what might happen then? And I was wondering what safeguards you had in place to prevent that from happening, misuse.
Right. The, each system is actually a hardware component that allows data transfer to some kind of fixed electronic medium, a flash drive, a disk, an external hard drive, or something like that. And they're designed to be mobile, to take into the field and to execute them, the use of them, and search warrants and things like that. So the data at first would be originally downloaded to some fixed electronic medium. And then that medium is plugged into a standalone system, a system that we would never consider attaching to the city's network or our internal network for those very reasons, those security reasons. Because what we're, the data that we would be capturing is evidence, not a public record. I watched the broadcast on Tuesday of the meeting last week, and there seemed to be the misperception that this data is somehow public record, and it's not. It is evidence. It's strictly controlled by Ohio Rules of Evidence. And so for that reason, that system has to stand alone. We do have a laptop computer that that data would then be transferred in. On that laptop computer would be the software that comes with each system. It's a one license per system only, so we would only be allowed to have that software on one computer only. And some systems, and I'm not sure if the systems we've, that have been quoted to us have this capability, but some systems come with software keys, like token rings or iLock keys or something like that, that must be present in the computer for the software to even work. For instance, we have that on our ID maker, so that IDs cannot be falsified and things like that. So the key must be present. Now, I don't know if those systems have those, but certainly it's in the interest of security, if that's available, I would consider buying that, so that the user has to possess that key, but I don't know if it's available. So the system is going to be extremely standalone. Once the data is analyzed, that data is going to have to be backed up probably to a CD-ROM or DVD, and then that disk of information goes into evidence because it's custodial property. So it would be logged into the evidence room, the chain of custody would be strictly adhered to, that kind of thing. And that's required by the court in order for the information to be admissible in court.
Yeah. Theoretically, if, let's just say everything turned out okay, there was no crimes committed, what would happen to that DVD now?
We probably would enter it as evidence, just simply because it's taken or possibly safekeeping. We also could destroy it. My guess is, is just like when a search warrant or of a residence, if you go in and you don't find what you're looking for, you don't take anything out of the house.
Right.
You simply return it to the court as no evidence obtained. Now, how that's processed with data, I'm not certain, but my guess is, is, you know, we would have to do a return on a search warrant. And there's only two ways that we would be allowed to use this software. One would be on a search warrant issued from the judge based on probable cause from our department, from the officers investigating the case, or voluntarily from a crime victim or something like that. And my guess is the court would probably rule it to be destroyed or would, you know, render some disposition for that property based on the return of the warrant. And as discussed with the Law Director's Office, if we do a search and don't find any evidence, there's just no reason to keep the data. If we do a search and find evidence, we would only submit the evidence that we find, not the entire data set. So, so, you know, general contacts and text messages and things like that that we find that are not evidence of crime would never be submitted to court. But you're correct in your understanding that we would keep the entire data set because that entire data set could be viewed by defense attorneys and things like that for exculpatory evidence and whatnot, although we are required to provide exculpatory evidence with any other evidence that we find. Exculpatory evidence being evidence that exonerates the suspect, not is evidence to his guilt.
Okay. Next. Other questions?
Yeah, thank you for coming tonight. My main concern from the beginning was, we were told that we currently have access to the software through the state, I guess it's Columbus Police Department, so, but not BCI, and also Washington County. And for me, seventeen thousand dollars seems like a lot to spend if it's something that we have access to in the exigent circumstance where we need, where there's, you know, a safety issue, or if there's a, you know, felony investigation. It's something that we already have access to, it seems like to me. And so I guess I'm curious as to how often we use, we take advantage of this now, even though it's a pain and it takes a while to get the information. And you've mentioned that in the future it might be two or three times a week you could foresee if we have the software. So what's, how's that compared to what we've been doing the past year or so?
Right. There's actually two, two issues to consider when you talk about exigent circumstances. We just had a situation, I really can't go into the details, but we had a situation where we had what I believe to be, and I think the Service Director would agree, exigent circumstances to use it, and it took us four weeks to get it accomplished through Columbus Police Department. Now, once the test is over, it's a matter of hours. The tests take anywhere from four to seventeen, even up to twenty-four hours, based on the model of phone, size of the hard drive, that kind of thing. But once the test is completed, we get the results back very quickly. But to arrange the test, to drive it up there, to drive it back, that kind of thing, you know, literally, it took us four weeks. In that time, and that might not be a terrible long wait for a burglary or whatnot, but for crimes involving passion, like domestic violence, stalking, things like that, that's forever, that's an eternity. The other issue is, is that the environment that this data or potential evidence sits on is really volatile. And even though we have the phone in our possession, we are aware of software that can wipe phones out remotely. And so in my mind, if it's a small price to pay to have the, the security for our community to say, we have this capability and we can possibly do this in a short amount of time, rather than go back and forth with emails and phone calls to try to arrange something like that. I don't know what technology Washington County has, other than I was told it's dated. I know Columbus PD, obviously, a metropolitan department like that has a budget that they can keep up with current software trends. I also would like to be able to tell you that this will last us three to five years, but I honestly don't know with the technology. I do know that the company that we're buying the main set of hardware and software from offers trade-in values for older systems and whatnot, so you get some discount by getting into the system. But how that's all going to transpire, I really don't know. We buy car computers now for the cruisers, and it seems like they're outdated in twelve months, and that's unfortunate, because we need a computer to last us about three to five years. So, so that's the issue, is, is, is getting it organized and arranged, scheduled, and then also trying to protect the data. There are methods, there are bags, I know, that you can stick a cell phone in that shield it from remote calls and things like that. Don't know that we would, they're rather expensive, but it might be something we invest in, in the future, depending on cost. But for now, that's, that's my concern with, and that's the reason we would, we would like this. And in fact, we were discussing this in the department last weekend. One of my officers told me about a case that day that he could have used this software with, and as he explained it to me, it made perfect sense why we should have it, so.
That makes sense. The question of how much it's been used in the past year, though, I didn't quite get an answer to.
You know, I don't, I know once, because it just happened, we've talked about it for a few months, and I know that it happened before that because the officers knew exactly who to call when I requested the service a couple months ago. So I know that it's been done, but I couldn't tell you. I do know that, that we hold off on things like that, except for very serious cases, because of the scheduling issue and the logistics involved with getting it done. The further you wade into a case, the less likely that data is going to be there, because this system has the ability to recover deleted data, but only if the operating system in the phone hasn't written it over. And once a file is deleted, it's deleted from your view, but not necessarily from the hard drive or the phone or the computer or the device. We've had this forensic software for computers for some time, probably over ten years, and it is dated. And we've considered updating it, except that we see the same use that was happening on PCs ten years ago now taking place on cell phones, which is a remarkable thing, that the cell phones that you and I are carrying are more powerful than the PCs from ten years ago. But we see, you know, the data has become a lot more mobile, and we're just trying to keep up with the times, so. But I do know that when I asked them how often they could potentially use this, the answer was two to three times a week, depending on the caseload.
And are those, it doesn't require a warrant if you have permission. What about if you don't have permission and you don't have a warrant? Would you be able to use the software on a phone that's been taken into police possession in some way?
No, absolutely not, because it's not submittable, it wouldn't be, it would be excluded under exclusionary rule. If we tried to submit evidence from a phone that we had no warrant for and no permission to search, we wouldn't be allowed to use it. The judge would throw it immediately out of court. And I would comment, there is some, there was some question about, or some comment somewhere along the line that police already have the authority to search cell phones, and that's only partially true. There was a ruling, I believe, out of Ohio Supreme Court that stated that a police officer can do a cursory search on a cell phone. The headlines in the media said police authorized to search cell phones, but when you read the details, it's a very cursory search that we're allowed to basically, during a search incident to arrest, if we come across a cell phone, we're allowed to turn it on and look for a phone number of that phone. And then based on that information, that's what happened in this case that the court ruled on, the officers went and got a subpoena from the carrier for the records of that phone. And the defendant tried to get that case overturned based on violation of Fourth Amendment, and the court ruled that it was no different than opening an address book or a diary and looking to see what the person's name was or verifying certain information. So that kind of a search is not what we're talking about with this software. We have no authority to arrest someone and plug their phone into the software. That kind of a detailed search would require a search warrant under every circumstance or permission.
Member Patterson.
I, I've said this before, and I want to mention it again, and that is that one of the advantages of a system like this, as I see it, is one where it would augment our Amber Alert system. Again, if there was a child abduction, what was left behind was a cell phone, and if we were able to get, you know, if there was voluntary consent from the parent to be able to look at this, to see if it was one more tool or one more device that could be looked at to see, you know, whether or not we can find where that child might be located, because as the chief was saying, it's urgency that we're looking at. And in my mind, you know, four to six to eight weeks, too much can happen in that amount of time when it comes to issues like that. The question I do have, though, for you, Chief, knowing how rapidly technology changes, operating systems are being upgraded and changed all the time, you know, there's a new cell phone that just came out today, and with issues like that, my question becomes one of software upgrades. And if you can give us a sense as to the vendor and what the vendors, for the three systems, what their policy is for software upgrades.
I do know that the, the system comes with, with software upgrades for a finite amount of time. Pretty much all software packages do. I believe it's twelve months. So, so the software upgrades would go twelve months. And that is something we would negotiate with them. We negotiate things like that because we're a government agency, we're pretty much required to because of our limited budget, to get the best value for our tax dollar, or in this case, you know, asset dollars or forfeited dollars. And so that is definitely something that we would negotiate with the company. We're also trying to negotiate a price break with them based on other parameters. And so, yes, but to answer your question, yes, I would not buy the software, the package, unless it came with some kind of guaranteed, although finite, amount of software upgrades. And my guess is, is when the hardware changes, you're probably going to have to buy the software to upgrade as a new package. But again, at that point, we'll get trade-in value for what we currently have. And then it's, again, it's an economic decision based on budget at the time. But I do see the potential for this to be very productive. And to comment on your, your question about, in the case of a kidnapping, an Amber Alert type situation, if we went to the scene of a kidnapping and found a cell phone we believe belonged to the victim, we would certainly, and I don't know how a judge would rule on this, the Law Director would be the expert on that, but we would certainly go before a judge and explain the situation and try to obtain a warrant based on the information we had at the time. And I'm, unless it's some violation of court procedure, I'm pretty confident a judge would issue a warrant for that, that kind of circumstance. The second thing we would do, we would try to find a parent or guardian to authorize that. I'm not sure how the courts would, would look at that. And it's interesting that, you know, if we were able to discern a suspect and make an arrest and save the person, or at least solve the crime, that defendant will have an opportunity to get that evidence that we would find excluded based on those kinds of issues, that we didn't have permission, or we got permission from the wrong person, or a parent can't authorize permission. Those are all things that have to go before the court and be decided. But the, the good thing is, is it's decided in court of law. It's not up to us, it's up to the judicial system.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. I have questions tonight. And I think that with our most recent Steubenville issue, there was a lot of things that were on cell phones and in the media. I think everybody's kind of alerted to what all these concerns are. I want to go back to what Mr. Reisner said. So if it's a voluntary handing over to you, I think there still is concern out there about what happens to that information, whether it goes to see a judge or not. You know, after the crisis is over and maybe there's nothing been found or anything like that, you still have that information that was on that cell phone. So one of the things I'm wondering is, it sounds like this is a new area for policy within the department in terms of how you proceed with this information, where this information goes. And I understand all the chain of evidence and all that kind of thing, but it sounds like this is so new and fresh to many departments, and I, certainly Columbus has a whole protocol on this, but it seems that if we were to allow this purchase, that there would need to be a kind of a, something added to that, maybe on top of what already exists. Does that make sense?
It does. I can tell you that Columbus doesn't have any protocol on the use of this equipment. That's a question we asked last week from the forensic examiner. They allow the rules of evidence to guide their use, just like they do any other tool. But I can see your point on the issue of what happens to data that we're not going to use.
Yeah.
And I'm more than happy to institute policy in the department on that, probably make it an addendum to our property policy, which we do have, that guides how we enter evidence and how we maintain evidence and all that. And I think that's probably an appropriate use of it. My, my guess is, is that if we search voluntarily a cell phone and find nothing, we would basically give that data set back to the individual that owns it. You have to keep in mind that, that police officers don't, when we seize evidence, we don't own it.
Right.
We are in custodial, it's custodial property. And the judge is actually the person that decides the disposition of that evidence after case. Now, he can forfeit it to the department, he can return it to the owner, he can order it destroyed, but the judge actually signs the order on all property that we deal with. And at no time, unless the judge orders it forfeited to our department, do we own it. And that only happens after the case. And I can't see the judge ever forfeiting the ownership of that data to the police department. I can see him ordering it stored in evidence.
Right.
For future cases or for appeals and things like that, or I could see him ordering it destroyed, or I can see him ordering it back to the, to the owner. But my guess is, in that situation, the protocol would be if we find nothing usable, we simply give the data set back to the owner. And also in voluntary searches, we would definitely secure a waiver from the owner of the phone. And it's something we've already done with, with at least one other case that I'm aware of, where we secured a waiver from the individual detailing exactly what we were looking for and exactly what we were not looking for. In other words, if we found anything other than related to this specific case, we were not going to use it.
So I think that's important for the public to hear, is that... So I think that's important for the public to hear, is that, again, this is a piece of the procedure, you're already doing some of that. But further on down the line, for this specific kind of software, I think that's really important to, you know, we're dealing with a lot of young people too in this community, and they don't always know, you know, what questions to ask. I think the general public doesn't always generally know those kinds of things. So I just think it's good to have this conversation.
Well, I appreciate you answering those types of questions, because our integrity is key to our existence.
Exactly.
And, you know, we are to uphold the public trust.
Right.
And the notion, or the suspicion, that the police department would somehow violate the public trust by looking at things that we're not supposed to be looking at is something that needs to be talked about. So I appreciate that it's brought up. The simple fact is, is that we're not going to do that. I think initially when we made this request, there might have been the perception that this was airwave snooping software. And I'm not interested in having anything like that anywhere near the Athens Police Department. We don't need that technology. There are other ways to get the evidence that we need to prosecute cases. And I simply would not try to obtain something like that. That's something for the federal government to deal with, from my perspective, in a homeland security issue. The case that you brought up about Steubenville, Chief Powers from WPD and I were talking last week, and this, that kind of case would have been the perfect kind of case to have this kind of capability in the department. Because it would have resolved a lot of issues in that case had they had that ability. Also, nobody's asked yet, but I want to comment, it came up last week, that this information was potentially available from the companies, the vendors of, the carriers of the cellphone carriers, like Sprint and AT&amp;T and whatnot. And the simple fact is, is that that also is at least a six to eight week process, just to get a subpoena recognized and get information back. Most companies don't keep data, the kind of data that we're looking at in cell phones, like text messages. They simply don't track the text messages and keep that data in their system. I understand that one company may keep it for five days, but when you consider a live time of six to eight weeks to get a subpoena obtained, sent to Van Nuys, California, where the majority of these companies are, it's six weeks. By that time, that data's gone, if they kept it at all. And they only respond with the minimum amount of information. We've sent subpoenas in stalking domestic violence cases and argued for months with cellphone carriers about what information we needed. And we would get several different datasets back until we finally got what we were looking for. And then by then, the case had moved so far forward that we almost didn't need the data. So what we're talking about is having it available to us potentially in 24 hours after crime is committed. And in those stalking and domestic violence cases, missing persons, the rape cases and sexual assault cases, I think that is, $17,000 in my mind is a small price to pay from an asset seizure fund to protect our community.
Any more questions? Remember, councilmembers, ordinance, excuse me, ordinance 2813, actually has three parts for approval. Working on the brick chimneys here at the city building, reimbursement of some Go Bus ticket expenses to the community center where those tickets are sold, and the software that we're talking about. And we're asking for approval or not for all three of these. So, ordinance 2823, and ordinance amending the 2013 appropriation ordinance. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Chief Powell, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Moving on. Ordinance 2913, and ordinance amending ordinance 07511 to increase sewer rates in accordance with the Athens City Code. Member Naisley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 2913.
Second.
And this particular ordinance is increasing the sewer rates within the, with the Athens in accordance with the Athens City Code. You might recall that several weeks ago, we passed a wastewater treatment plant improvement plan, and that is a project that's going to last several years. And on completion, we'll have upgrades to our sewer plant that we anticipate will provide for the community for the next 50 to 60 years. And what we need to do in order to pay for that project, it's a $19 million project, it'll cost $22 million to repay it, we need to be able to assure that we have adequate revenue from sewer funds to be able to pay that expense off. Previously, in 2011, we had put through sewer rate increases for a period of five years. And that was, that's why we're amending this particular ordinance now, 2913, amends ordinance 7511, the one that we passed in 2011. And what this will do is put into effect some increases to accommodate and raise enough revenues to pay for that. So through 2015, the rate increase would be 3%. Then in 2016 and 17, the sewer rate increase would be 4%. In 2018, it would be 5%. And then 2019 through '22 would be 4%. And in 2023 through '33, it would be a 1% increase. So this takes us through from 2013 to 2033, the duration, the 20-year duration of the loan that we're borrowing for the funds. Over the course of this time for these increases, what that would mean is that a family that pays approximately $30 per month for sewer now would be paying $11 more per month at the end of that 20-year period. So we've tried to keep the rates as modest as we can. The ordinance also contains within it a requirement that the city look at the rates each year to make sure that we have enough. And if we were fortunate enough that we had enough and then some, and we could actually reduce the rates, that would also be a consideration. But we'll be reviewing it on an annual basis to make sure that we have adequate funds.
Comments? Councilmembers? We did have a second. All those in favor, excuse me, all those in favor of ordinance 2913 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 3013, and ordinance reaffirming ordinance 01204, authorizing the city of Athens to pick up the statutorily required contribution to the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund for the participating employees in the Athens City Police Department. Member Naisley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 3013.
Second.
Thank you. And this particular, there are two in the series here. One is for the police pension fund, the next one we'll be reading is for fire. And as part of the pension system, both the employer and the employee contribute a certain portion to the pension fund. The employer contribution has been set at 20, actually at 19 and 24% for these two different funds. And we have not had an employee increase, that percentage is at 10%. So what we're doing is, over a period of three years, we will be increasing that 10% amount that the employee contributes to the pension fund from 10% to 12.25%.
All those in favor of ordinance 3013 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. We move on to ordinance 3113, and ordinance reaffirming ordinance 01204, authorizing the city of Athens to pick up the statutorily required contribution to the Ohio Police and Fire Pension Fund for the participating employees in the Athens City Fire Department. Member Naisley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 3113.
Second.
And this is the very similar ordinance, and it is for the fire department employees. So what we'll be doing is the same thing. Over a period of the next few years, we'll be increasing the contribution that the employee pays into the pension fund from 10% to 12.25%.
All those in favor of ordinance 3113 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is adopted. Ordinance 3213, and ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between State and Carpenter on Saturday, June 29, 2013, from 10:00 a.m. to midnight for Ohio Brew Week. Member Gosney.
Thank you. This, I would like to begin by moving to amend ordinance 3213 to include an additional section that we discussed in committee last week and have received a map of since then.
Seconds.
And this is to facilitate the big event on Saturday at the end conclusion of Ohio Brew Week. And the amendment is to add, I'm going to read it in a second, but it's to add a section of State Street from College Street to what looks like the end of the Passion Works parking lot, or the end of the Domino's property, to facilitate an arts market, to allow a sort of open-air arts market there during the event. And I think you may have some comments on that from Paul Ayer. Oh yeah, please, please come to microphone so we can, everybody can hear you.
She prepared your Athens Art Hop information. Hi, my name is Jane Forst Redfern, I'm the director of the Dairy Barn, and I am the chair of the Athens Arts Hop. The goal of this committee, well, it is part of the Athens Area Citizens for the Arts, it's a committee of that. And I started this committee to basically put together a map of all of the art venues in the Athens area, so that as people come to the Dairy Barn, we can also get them to go other places and get our money spread around to all of the arts venues. Well, that committee had a bigger vision, and that was to kind of start an arts hop, arts crawl. And so, you know, big vision, we want, you know, in 10 years, for that particular event, this arts hop to be quite a large, you know, event pulling thousands of tourists to the region. In speaking with the group, we came up with the idea of doing a number of evening events during Brew Week to give folks, tourists in our areas, a place to go and enjoy the arts besides the ones that are in local bars or venues. And so, what we decided to do is on Wednesday night, we are in coordination with the Concerts on the Green, we'll have open-air artists encouraging local artists to do their wares on the green, as well as we'll be making masks. We are in the process of securing the horse and wagon to take families from the Green up to Passion Works and have it be kind of a family event, and that will occur from five to eight. On Thursday, the hop is going to move to Dairy Lane and the Kennedy. And we will also be open from five to eight for the public to do various mask-making as well as enjoying the arts at our various venues. Friday, of course, that's the final Friday, so we go to where we already do things in the Athens area, and the focus will be in Nelsonville. And then on Saturday, the culmination of Brew Week, we are working with Dan Gates and members of the committee at Brew Week to add on an area, not within the alcohol area and Court Street, but in front of Passion Works from College to around the Passion Works parking lot, to have approximately 25 to 50 vendors, arts venues, vendors, have some family activities from noon to nine, and also at 2:00, in coordination with Brew Week, we are working on a parade. I know it sounds silly, but every night of the arts hop, we will have mask-making activities, and then we'll encourage families to bring their masks and participate in the arts hop parade, also in coordination with Brew Week. So, we, you know, spoke with Ms. Mosley about having our own event, and we just felt that it's better to build on something we're already doing than to create a whole nother event. And so we'll, you know, see how it goes this year, and if we grow out of our area, perhaps we can do it at a different venue or different location. But that's what we're all working on right now. And, you know, in preparation, we will be doing a artist map of those different locations, as well as a very comprehensive list of mixed media artists in the area, so that if people want to drive out to David Haas Stettler's studio, or Susan Sherman's, or Fur Peace Ranch and their new museum, those will also be there as activities during the day, as well as the ones that are already open, like Quilt National this summer.
Great. Any questions from councilmembers or anyone else?
Sounds great.
Yeah, it does.
I agree.
So...
Of course I would.
Thank you. Yes.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It seems like a fun addition to the Brew Week activities, and hopefully we'll look to the future to see if it grows into something independent of that weekend or that week.
Well, we have a lot to celebrate in our arts in this region, and, you know, we just want to make sure that we utilize them as more of an economic development opportunity than we are now. So, let's grow the arts. Thank you.
Thank you. Unless there are additional comments, I'll read the amended language to include this section. So ordinance 3213, Section 1A, will be read as follows. Close Court Street to vehicular traffic in the city of Athens between State and Carpenter and on a portion of East State Street in accordance with the map attached here too, and incorporated herein by reference. And then the date and time is the same as existing, as the existing ordinance. In Section B, it will read, ban parking on Court Street in the city of Athens between State and Carpenter and on a portion of East State Street in accordance with the map attached here too, and incorporated herein by reference. So those are the two changes to those two sections, just to allow this section of street to be closed as well. And I guess that's it for the amendment discussion.
Any questions?
No.
The ordinance, having been amended, is now read for the first time?
We gotta approve it.
We're voting on the amendment that Member Gosney just read. All those in favor of the amendment to this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Thank you. Now...
We'll have to continue.
We have plenty, we have some time.
We do have time, yeah.
Okay. So, at this time, ordinance 3213, with its amendment, has been read for the first time. We will do it again at our next meeting. Ordinance 3313, and ordinance declaring certain equipment no longer needed for a municipal purpose and declaring an emergency. Member Gosney.
Thank you. I would like to consider ordinance 3313 for adoption.
Second.
This ordinance is so we can get rid of a couple pieces of equipment that are no longer useful to the city. One is a 1983 paint machine that is dangerous and no longer functional. And the second item is, actually, there's three on here. The second item is a 1997 pickup truck that is not in good shape. And the third one is the Arts West pews. So, those are the items, I know the, what's happening to those pews?
Yes.
Essentially, the, there's a couple things going on with the pews. One is that we want to switch the seating system there eventually. There's been interest from the county courthouse, courtrooms, to replace their pews, and they've been looking at ours. There's been interest from the county courthouse courtrooms to replace their pews and they've been looking at ours and covering our pews, but the fact is, there is a falling apart. So, there's actually been a lot of people who have expressed an interest in purchasing these things. Or, you have, about to correct me, so go ahead.
Well, I guess what I'd like to say is I have been approached by a county commissioner asking if twelve to fourteen of those could be donated, since they being a separate governmental entity. That still leaves us with over twenty for a sale in the future, so that is my request.
And judges. So, county commissioners and judges have approached us and so they really need some benches.
Yeah, these are their outside hall pews or benches that they have. And again, we, we've talked about trying to get something a little bit more fluid in Arts West, movable chairs. I talked to Andrew Chickie earlier today. He's looking at different models, something that'll hold up better.
You do a floor.
The pews are nice. They're fixed where they are, but they're left over to the Nazarene Church and they just, they don't accommodate all the different positions or things we want to do with Arts West.
Sounds like many of them may find good homes elsewhere in the city.
The hope is we can finance by selling some of these things, donating, I'm hearing, but also selling them. And there has been interest because it's, they're good oak. There's a certain attraction. Some of the people want to put them maybe outside porches, I hope.
Let's hope not.
Well, they won't catch fire as much as couches. But at the same time, you know, we hope to be able to actually finance the next set of chairs if possible by doing this. And again, it's, it's part of the process of changing this over from what it was to where we want it to be.
And the way the ordinance reads now, it does not allow the donation of the pews, so... Or a portion of the pews or whatever. It's also been brought to my attention that...
It doesn't...
Vehicles by donation.
Yeah, I mean normally that's kind of usually what I have. For example, you're going to be doing the retired police cruiser that's going to Oblennis Security. That's donation is occurring this week, yes. So normally that is in there, but it was kind of specific on the sale. And it's mine, what I've been told is that they are, the county as entity or what have you, they have to put work in and labor into even getting them ready and getting them moved and relocated. So it's, they are indeed, there's costs associated, just like with anything else, like issue charges or to be given.
Is, are you asking that we amend to allow you to donate? Or would you, would you be able to still process it, you know, for a dollar or something, you know, in terms of making it essentially a donation to the county? Although it costs more than a dollar to track that check and...
Well, twenty-four if they, or twelve if they need twelve. I guess we could always stress the definition of a vehicle, but I don't think a pew is a vehicle by any means.
I'd be happy to amend if the other items are, you know, really hurting to get those out the door.
I, I just don't know that... Yeah, I don't know the, how that would be interpreted and the law director's not here to advise me on the sale of the pews.
Well, let's, let's go ahead and amend that then. So I would like to withdraw my motion for adoption. And who had the second?
Second. I second it.
So you'll withdraw your...
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay. So, let me try this again. I would like to move to amend this ordinance in section two to strike the word vehicle and instead have it stay authorized to dispose of said items by donation to other governmental agencies or nonprofit organizations.
Should there also be in section one? Athens City Council hereby declares the following vehicles...
And, yes, thank you. And also in section one to strike the word vehicle and insert the word items.
Okay, so again. So we have an amendment proposed in a second. So all those in favor of the amendments to...
Yes, they're going to try to sell some, donate some.
All we did was change vehicles to items.
How much?
So, all those in favor? What's the question now?
Nothing.
Yeah, I think I was being asked, what is the considered value? And we've been told it, it could be, begin at a hundred and fifty dollars a pew, so... I haven't done my pew research. That's what I was told. So I knew that was...
But the idea is so we can have, you know, we basically don't have to cost too much money to get replacement shoes. So, we'll be looking at that dollar amount of the chair replacements here.
So again, we have a motion to amend ordinance thirty-three thirteen and a second. The amendment is just changing the words vehicle, the word vehicles to items. All those in favor of the amendment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Okay. The ordinance is amended and read for the first time. And that, moving on to second, ordinances for second reading. Ordinance thirty-five thirteen, an ordinance accepting the petition for annexation of approximately twelve point six zero one eight acres along East State Street, the former Columbia Gas property. Ordinance thirty-six thirteen, an ordinance designating the zone for the annexation area proposed along East State Street, former Columbia Gas property. Ordinance thirty-seven thirteen, an ordinance authorizing the design of a new production well in the Armidge Well Field. And we move on to ordinance for first reading. Ordinance thirty-eight thirteen, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street on Friday, June seventh and July twenty-sixth, and a portion of Union Street on September thirteenth, two thousand and thirteen, for a cruise-in. Introduced by Councilmember Gosney.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was discussed in committee. This is an annual event, or a series of events that we have in the city, organized in part by the Plains Lions Club, where basically it's a classic car show at two different dates in the summer, one in June, it's June seventh and another July twenty-sixth, and then a third event on September thirteenth. So classic car shows, some light oldies perhaps in some of those situations. It's, the street closures are tentatively scheduled for five-thirty p.m. to nine p.m. And also, of course, we'd have to ban parking for a longer period in order to enable the setup of the event.
This is an event that's been happening on city streets for several years. And I think last year was the first year that they moved up to Union Street and liked it pretty well. So they're continuing, but the main focus is on Court, on Court Street. This is ordinances for first reading. Ordinance thirty-nine thirteen, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code, Title VII, Section seven point oh five point twenty-six B one, city garage metered parking rates and regulations on Saturday, June twenty-ninth, two thousand and thirteen, from ten a.m. to midnight for the Ohio Brew Week Festival. Member Gosney.
Thank you. This ordinance is to allow free parking in the city garage during the culmination event of Brew Week, which will be on Saturday night at the end of the week. Free parking will begin at ten a.m. and go until midnight. And this is something we do for certain other events, such as Boogie on the Bricks. We've, for a few years, we've allowed free parking in the city garage for that event as well, just to help ease the traffic, increase traffic and increase numbers of cars uptown during those events.
And the city supports the activities brought to Athens for this Brew Week festival. Ordinance forty thirteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to make application and enter into a project agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was also discussed in council or in committee last week where this would allow the mayor, again, to apply for a Nature Works grant. The Nature Works grant currently has twenty-two thousand dollars in funding, which means that there would have to be a twenty-five percent match to that, which would bring the total cost on a project up to twenty-nine thousand, twenty-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents, of which the city would, would have, their amount that they would incur would be seven thousand two hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. That would be used for, the plan is for a multipurpose basketball slash play area at the West State Street Park, centered pretty much in the middle of where the baseball fields currently exist. There's a playground area right there. It would be either an asphalt or a concrete pad. In my conversation with the Director of Arts Parks Recreation, Rich Campitelli, Rich said that it would probably be a concrete slab that's put down and it has a porous playground surface, which would be laid over the playground area, allowing for moisture to be wiped away quickly from the playground area. Again, it would be multipurpose. They can put hopscotch and four-square patterns on top of the substrate, or on top of the surface, rubberized surface. It's also something that will more than likely be ADA compliant as well with the thought of having a sidewalk entranceway onto this particular concrete pad. A couple other things real quick is that, again, this is a fund where it will be, it's a reimbursable grant. In other words, with the awarding of the grant, the construction would have to be complete, if I'm not mistaken, to where then we would be reimbursed for the seventy-five percent. And as I understand it, it would come out of the CAPRec fund. Is that correct?
Yes. We'll seek that in the future once we're, as long as we have the supporting legislation, we can submit the application, so...
This is, this is not by a long shot, the first Nature Works grant that we pursued. Can you just give us some...
The canoe access, boat ramp, the canoe access boat ramp comes to mind.
I think some lights at the fields, ball field.
We did that, I'm not sure, do you call it roller hockey or something? That can be set up outside of the community center on that basketball court?
Oh, sure.
Is that what that's called? That was funded through that?
You didn't get the last round. I think Nelsonville got the last round last, last year. So we skipped one year.
This is an application that the city applies for. It's just one more instance of the fact that the administration is looking for funding sources in many other places, which allows the city to have opportunities that we wouldn't otherwise have. Ordinance forty-one thirteen, an ordinance authorizing the repair and rehabilitation of city water wells, project number two seventy-five, and declaring an emergency. Member Reisner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move to consider this ordinance under suspension of the rules.
We can't.
You need six?
Not enough.
So just tell us about it.
Okay.
We'll try next time.
Next time. This ordinance was, will give authorization and funding to rehabilitate several of the water wells we have down at the hospital and West State Well Fields. This will authorize the city safety director to authorize to expand up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from the water fund plant, seven forty dot six three seven, for said project, number two seventy-five. Reason for the emergency is we really need to get these wells cleaned back in service, get our water supply back to where it's supposed to be, get the reservoirs topped off. So, the quicker we can move on this, the better off we'll all be.
We have a resolution for the first, for its first reading. Resolution oh five thirteen. A resolution declaring the necessity of certain improvements in the city of Athens, Ohio, consisting of the construction of streets in a portion of the area of the city known as University Estates. The levy of assessments, the levy of assessments to pay a portion of the costs of such improvements, authorizing matters related thereto and declaring an emergency. Member Naisner.
Thank you, Mr. President. By way of background information, to kind of summarize some of the discussion that happened last week at our committee meeting, portions of the roads that need to be fixed in University Estates are private roads at this point. And as the mayor said, this is a problem without an easy solution, but we've identified a need and we're endeavoring to resolve the issue. So what we would be doing is, starting with this resolution of necessity for an assessment process, which means that we will move forward with assessing the property owners for the cost of completing the repairs on the sections of road in University Estates. It's approximately twelve hundred and fifty feet. The cost of this will be approximately seven hundred thousand, over seven hundred thousand dollars. What happens is there will be a series of ordinances. This first one is a resolution of necessity and Department of Public Works, Andy Stone, has outlined this process for us and done quite a good job of it. The resolution of necessity happens first, then ordinance to advertise, accept and accept bids for seeking the loan. Then we'll authorize and appropriate the expenditures for the construction and the construction engineering of the repairs. We'll advertise. There will be a construction period, which we are estimating at this point will be from May seventeenth to July one, so it will be about forty-five days. And then at this point, after we have the final costs, the final assessment amounts will be sent by the clerk of council to the property owners and that will be sent by July twenty-second. And then any unpaid assessments will be certified to the county auditor. The reason we're beginning this process now is that those notices of the unpaid assessment amounts need to go to the county auditor by the September twenty-seventh deadline in order to be listed on the payroll taxes. When it goes on to the payroll taxes, property owners then have an option to pay that over a period of ten years. And that fee that is assessed will include the interest rate and other administrative fees along with that. And of course, we would encourage anyone who wants to pay cash upfront. That would be wonderful. But we also understand that people work on, on payment plans and budgets too, so we understand that option. So this is part of what's defined by Ohio Revised Code for the assessment process for us. So this first one is just saying, this is a resolution of necessity, that we need to fix the road.
Mayor, want to say something?
No, I think I...
I was, I just had a question. Member Naisler, so just for clarification, we have the petition here attached to our information.
Yes, we do.
And, you know, reviewing this, I remember that we talked about a certain percentage needing to sign on that petition to make it, was it sixty percent?
That is correct. It's sixty percent.
So is sixty percent included in that, the citizens' bank?
Yes.
And they are included as individual, each property listed. And we did have that clarified for us. So we, if I'm doing my math right, we have a hundred and one of the hundred and thirty-four property owners with a signature, so we have seventy-five percent.
With many of those signatures coming from the citizens' bank?
Correct, along with a resolution from the bank also, saying that they are wanting to proceed with this repair.
And our question was raised during our discussion a couple weeks ago. Once the city repairs the roads, then they are city streets after that?
It'll be, yes, we'll accept them once we bring them up to standard. Again, this is a problem that's been there for a while. We have not accepted those streets. Portions of it, I think the first twelve hundred feet or something of...
Twelve fifty.
Twelve fifty of University Boulevard Estates has been accepted. It's the rest that's not been up, built up to snuff. It's the rest that's not been up, built up to snuff. Again, process-wise, we really don't need that 60%. We can actually do an assessment without that. But the idea is to get, was to get cooperation and, you know, collaboration with the property owners up there who are very much aware of the condition. So, that's what we strive for, so we can bring everybody on board, especially, as you say, the bank itself, which is going to be one of the major portions of this.
Exactly. And I just thought it was a good idea to bring that forward, again, that there's been this collaborative effort to move on fixing these streets, that these owners have been contacted, the bank has been very much involved, and that this is, again, a kind of, for their neighborhood, a neighborhood issue, so to speak, along with city administration and the bank. They own many lots.
Again, it's partially, it's grassroots in its nature, and that's why we're going to take it on, because it's a need that needs to be filled. And I thank you for doing a lot of this, because this is going to be work for you guys. Clerk of council is going to have lots of things to mail out. You're going to have to go at least three or four more ordinances to be read. And it's a lot of hoops to jump, but that's why it's done, because it's not an easy thing to do. It's not made to be an easy thing to do, just assess somebody who has a thing. So we have to follow the process and we'll get to, we'll have a good street, which we'll accept, and that will be part of a city.
So it puts the road in workable order, and the estimated life on the road will be 20 years. We realize that potholes happen in this city, especially with the heave and freezing and thawing that we get during the winter months. But we have every confidence in the work of the public engineering office and the firm that they'll be working with.
Announcements and other business. Next week, committee meetings. We have committee chairs that know right now that they need a committee. They're not even looking over there. Just automatically write nicely down.
That's exactly. One of the items would be an application for the Bulletproof Best Grant Program has been reinitiated, and we'll need authority to apply for that. Okay? So that would be one item for the finance personnel.
And other committee chairs, please let the clerk of council know, so she can get you on the agenda. And now we have an opportu, do we have announcements or anything from the service safety director or the mayor? I'm sorry. Now we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items in city services that have not been covered on our agenda. We have a lady back here who would like to speak. Mrs. Prisley, please sign in.
There's nothing to write with.
Oh.
I'm Joanne Prisley, and I live at Forty Grosvenor Street. And I was asked by my neighbor, Bill Sefranic, to come. He's in Colorado. But we are members of ANA, which is the Athens Near Northside Neighborhood Association. And in our group, we have always realized that one of the problems with living in the central city and with the city as a whole is the uneven application of the code. And so, one of Bill's, who is an attorney, and he feels that this is something that city council can do, is that the code enforcement office be divided into two. One section would be for inspected houses, and the other would be for trash and all the other things that are covered by the code. Now, there's some question whether or not the council has any authority to do that, but he says it does. But all that we would like to have is that you consider establishing a committee to discuss it, either one of your committees that already exists, or add an ad hoc committee that would look into it. And then, depending on how it needs to be handled, either recommend to the mayor or the council do it. Because if you have an even-handed and a consistent and an accurate application of the code, I think you'll find that people will be much happier, because it's not the big things that really bug everybody. They can accept the fact that you can't keep the wall, the street from falling over the hill like Grosvenor Street was falling over the hill easily, but you can make sure that the code is applied very carefully and that everybody's on the same page. Thank you. I didn't put my name down, so I have to do that. Anybody have any questions?
We're well informed.
Any other members of the audience, Mr. Speed? Okay, then we will adjourn for this evening at, it looks to me like 8:50.